Okay, Mr. President. You have the bill ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's go, council. We stand for the Prairie Pledge of Allegiance. For Lord and our God, we humbly bow before you and offer praises unto you. We do ask, Lord, that you bless us this evening. Monitor our words and our votes in this council and make it be the best vote and best voice heard for the community. We also ask that you -- excuse me. Also ask that you would be with our sick and their shut-in. You would lay your healing hand upon them and comfort them in their time of need. These things I pray in holy Jesus' name. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is identified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See you, please.
Phillips, here, Wright.
Here.
Harp.
Here.
Flowers.
Here.
Kennel.
Yes. Counsel. Councilman Avery is asked to be excused tonight because of a work commitment. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion. We excuse Councilman Avery due to a work commitment.
Second.
Motion by Wright, seconded by Phillips. Excuse Councilman Avery. Any questions or comments? Hearing then, court call the roll.
Phillips.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Harp.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Kennel.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, reading and disposition of minutes of the previous meeting. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, make a motion. We adopt the minutes of the previous meeting of March 12th as presented.
Second.
Motion by Harp, seconded by Flowers, to adopt as presented. Questions or comments? Hearing then, court call the roll.
Phillips.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Harp.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Kennel.
Yes.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved as presented. Reading and referring of -- oh, excuse me, citizens' comments. Any citizens who wish to address council this evening? We will have an orderly meeting and everybody can speak at once. Okay. Reading and referring of communications and petitions. Any petitions to be presented to council this evening? And communications?
Yes, sir.
I'm supposed to give any communications?
I didn't receive anything.
Taking a very high. Very good. For the council committees and council representatives. Finance, Mr. Harp.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. The finance committee has not met since our last council meeting. Therefore, a motion authorizing the village manager to pay bills when funds become available or checks dated from 3/10/2018 through 3/23/2018 in the amount of $189,693.34 would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Harp, seconded by Wright, when bills become available. Questions or comments?
Mayor, any questions or comments? I have listed the outstanding bills for this pay period, and they are as follows. $4,258 to Central Island Enterprises for the hot mix. $3,669.83 to Direct Business Energy Electricity. $102,980.69 to Farmers National Bank of Canfield for the bond principal payment. $3,040 to Mahoney County District Board of Health for lab testing. $12,309.52 to McGarvey Heating and Refrigeration for heater replacement. $6,050.46 to Univar USA for 3,000 gallons of DLPAC at the water plant. $27,393.13 to Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for health insurance premium. $4,656.6 to Cargill Incorporated for road salt. $2,019.2 to James Scott Powers Incorporated for fuel at the service department. $2,505.66 to Sebring Tire for vehicle maintenance at the service department. $2,022.59 to Huntington Bank for payment against the village credit card. And that's all I have on this.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing then, court call the roll.
Phillips.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Harp.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Yep.
Motion carries. Bills when funds become available.
Mayor, if I can ask a question now that we're through that. Bill, was that the last of the salt, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Sorry, I jumped the gun there a little bit, but.
It's fine.
Mayor. I have one other thing on. I would like to schedule a meeting, finance, for April 4th at 5:00 in council chambers to, again, review trash aggregation, monthly water billing, and also go over through the pay ordinance in regards to police officers' compensation when attending court while they're not working their normal shift.
Okay.
And also, I would like to go over fund balances for the first quarter. Basically, that your checks in balance, how much have we spent this year so far and how much has committed?
Okay, very good.
What time is that, Jim?
5:00.
5:00.
Okay.
Mr. Manager. Counselman, can I ask to -- it'll be in my report, but can we look at some capital equipment and add that as well?
Yes. Yes. Anything else?
No, Mayor. We'll move on.
Legislative, Mr. Avery is not here. Mr. Kennel and Mrs. Phillips?
Nothing to report.
Under capital improvement, Ms. Phillips?
No meeting, Mayor.
Ms. Phillips, under -- this is capital. It's improvement of some sort. Would you like to fill us in on your one-person font on the website? And I must congratulate you from what I've seen. You're doing an exceptional job.
Thank you. I did present council with information. I know I had about five proposals. I looked at, narrowed it down based on cost and the aesthetic look of what we should be getting. I chose a company. It's called Town Web Design LLC. They're out of Madison, Wisconsin. They specialize in municipality and websites. So they have over 450 websites for municipalities, and they're in over 23 states. So I did give you that. The proposal had the full breakdown of everything that they're able to offer. Basically, the design that we would get from them is 100% responsive, which is something I wanted to tell you, anyone that might not be familiar with. That means it will show up correctly on all devices. So whether you look at it on your smartphone, or computer, or tablet, it'll respond and change the format. So that's something that's nice for a newer website if we're going to do it. There is -- the cost associated with that is it's going to be $1,803 a year. That is for web hosting. It's $149 a month for the web hosting. So that is an additional cost. But I wanted to just emphasize, we're not paying a web hosting fee now, but we are paying every time we need to make a change. We're still paying. It's $109 an hour for them to make edits on our current site. So I just feel like if we're able to build it for that, they're going to waive the $1,500 design fee if we are able to commit to three years of web hosting with them. So there's that. With the web hosting, you do get free tech support. So if there's something that whoever's in charge of editing it, which manager, I don't know, I'm fine with that. But if there are other people in the departments that we want to train, or at least show them basic editing, we can do that to save money. But we also have the free tech support, so that is built into that monthly. So we do have that. There is nightly backups and emergency resource to your site if something were to happen. So that's included in that fee. And it also, the site gets better, they say, over time because it has ongoing updates and enhancements. So anytime a new code update or anything is released, it's automatically applied to your site, so it maintains it for you. It's nothing you have to worry about. So based on the proposal I gave, does anyone have any further questions or concerns?
And your assessment as to what you saw? You feel it's user-friendly?
Yes.
Okay.
I looked at a lot of the sample ones that they had. I would encourage you, if you had any concerns, to look at those. Just the layout itself is nice, but it's very professional. And like I said, this is what they specialize in, so they know how to lay it out, how the menu should function, and each individual sub-page should function.
And they needed to know by April 9th?
Yes.
In order to put this figure?
That's how good this -- yeah, that's when this proposal is good through. Which we need to renew our domain name in April anyway, and that's part of what they would do for us with the new site, so.
Mr. Manager, do you feel that we have that in place to go ahead and move forward?
Yeah. What I can do is when we go over the fund balances, and I should have the transfers appropriation packages to tidy up first quarter, we can make an amendment and add what we need to appropriate, put it in the proper line item, and make that happen, so.
Well, instead of waiting until the 9th, that's our next meeting, let's approve this tonight and authorize you to.
Move it along.
Move it along. Well, to make whatever.
Add it to the legislation.
Do whatever to get this thing moving. I mean, we've been working on this for five years.
Thank you. Agreed.
Motion to accept the proposal for the town web website addition. Make that motion?
It's called the revision to the Sebring.
Revision to the Sebring website.
Sebring Village website. Play your second.
Second.
Motion by Harp, seconded by Flowers. Any further questions or comments? Court call the roll. Let's get this thing going.
Phillips.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Harp.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Kennel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hope it works, damn.
I'm on it.
If not, we'll let you know about it.
Nice job, council. Very nice job.
We'll get it going.
Okay, annexation, business development, business account.
You can probably insert that.
No meeting.
Mayor.
Okay. Any headway on a couple of the business buildings downtown? Have they been sold yet, or?
Annual auction.
I'm still working on three of them.
Okay.
I don't know who owns or where they are or anything, and I got somebody looking at it.
Okay.
Things are really looking good, but I'm not to say right now.
Okay, very good. Service meetings, Mr. Wright?
Mayor, we have not met since our last council meeting, but we do need to schedule a meeting with the solicitor to review the rental property ordinance. So we're trying to locate that information from last year. The manager's going to look through his stuff tomorrow, and once he.
I think it's three years ago. Well.
Well, we started this right before you decided to go for a ride, and then we kind of have lost momentum on it, but we're going to get the momentum restarted. So if you do find that, Rick, just text me and let me know that you got it, and I'll stop down.
I know I haven't.
So once we get that information, Mayor, we will set up a meeting. Our goal is to have that in place by, at least for a first reading in June.
Okay, very good.
Seeing as I will be on delayed schedule in June, July, and August, probably, we may have to do, we may have to have another meeting in June, just to kind of. I'd like to have the public at least have one or two meetings to comment, should they have any questions or concerns, because I know there will be, for sure, so.
Okay. Safety, Mr. Flowers?
No meeting, Mayor, but since we are having a finance meeting on Wednesday, maybe we can squeeze a safety committee meeting in there too, since Marvin. I assume Jim, Marvin's going to be there Wednesday.
He had told me that he doesn't think he'll be out of town.
Okay. So if we can get the three of us together for a short meeting prior, or after, or whatever, it shouldn't take but maybe 15 minutes.
Oh.
We have to talk about it.
Schedule it for 4:00 or whatever.
Yeah, just real quick, so. I'll let everybody know.
Let me know what time.
On the 4th.
On the senior committee.
We have contracts. One, two dispatching contracts.
Oh, okay.
Craig Beach and the police personnel.
Very good, thank you. Okay, Parks and Recreation, Councilman Flowers.
Parks did meet on March 19th, 4:00 at the community center. Just some highlights of what's going on. Donation letters were set up, are done, and they will be mailed on the 19th, they were mailed, I guess. Got plaques for the trees. Need to buy some trees. They did talk about that. A lot of the meeting we discussed was money issues, which Mr. Kennel and I both told them they need to get with the finance committee to find out where they are with their money. Staffing will be up and running here in the next month. They had, they wanted, we're looking at putting one guy on for 30 hours a week, but they tabled it until they meet with the finance committee. They have positions that they need to look at. They're not sure if they're going to get a resignation or not. It all depends on his work schedule. If we do, that would be, I believe it's a school board appointment. I'm not sure. The Hot Stove League wants to replace one of the sheds. They'll do so at their cost. Mike Springer wants to donate time, dirt, and a machine to fix the toboggan area, and Circle Machine said, have at it, go ahead and do what you need to do. They have no issues. Porter Johns, they're looking at those. They're going to go local with Steve's Service, which is a good thing. They had some talk about the circus. They have not decided whether they're going to have the circus or not because of the damage it did to the grounds last year, or the last time they had it. They also have a Star Family Circus, which is inside. They have drafted a contract they're going to issue to them once Teresa takes a look at it. Did you get it to look at?
I did, yeah.
Okay. And see if they accept it or not. They got a couple of things going on with the boiler, which that's being taken care of. Mike White from White Contracting is going to come in and put some stuff. They had many donations. The meeting adjourned was at 5:34. It was a pretty lengthy meeting. Everybody was there also. Every Parks Board member was there.
Good, good. Very good. Civil Service, Ms. Phillips?
Yes, Mayor. Civil Service met tonight at 6:00 prior to council. They discussed the revisions that they had made to the rules from the March 12th meeting. They approved those revisions. They did have a couple of questions that they were still waiting for your.
Okay.
You know, yeah.
I do know.
Okay, the wording.
I thought they were meeting in April again.
Um.
I thought their next meeting was in April.
That's okay. They're just, they can make revisions. They wanted to at least make the revisions that we had.
Extra credit.
Yeah. They will be giving the patrolman exam April 7th at 9:00 at the high school. We do have six applicants that are going to be taking that. So, meeting adjourned at 6:10.
Thank you. Veterans Memorial, Mr. Wright?
Mayor, I guess I forgot to text you on the 21st, so I didn't attend, and honestly, I haven't looked at my emails, so I'm sure Mr. Fetters is forwarding me some information.
Okay.
So I'll try to look at that tomorrow and send that on to council.
Okay.
I'm sure they got a meeting scheduled for next month. I just don't know when yet.
Okay.
They did, I did tell you they got the speaker, Mr. Ickes, I believe is his name. Everything's getting moved up an hour from 1:00 to 12:00 start. So we'll raise the flags up at 12:00, and then they'll go into their normal session.
Very good. Retention Committee. The retention committee is going to meet. When do we meet?
Wednesday.
Wednesday at 10:00 right here. We do have stuff to.
Yeah. We're ready to go. There's a couple of departments will probably have to do a review in six months according to the ORC, but everybody else is ready to go.
Okay. Mr. Wright?
Can we get some quotes on the shred day, and let's get this thing under wraps, so I don't have to hear about it anymore from, you know. Everybody else served from the same person.
I got a quote at the end of last year, and they said it was going to be about the same as it was this last time, but then pennies, it was like $600 or so.
Well, if you guys are meeting, how long will you need to have those records ready for disposal? I mean, can we do that by the end of April, the beginning of May?
Probably closer into June, when it gets warmer out. Because we're going to have to have it on a Saturday when the public can come.
So can you ask them, Lee, if they have anything, any Saturday in June, what's available?
Sure.
And get back to us, please. Thank you.
Unless I missed something, that should take care of council committees and council representatives.
Mayor, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the parks, Kenny, I went up there last week, and I took up what we were going from the county as far as revenue generated on that half mill. It's about $16,000.
Yeah.
I asked her to look at what it costs to run that pool only. That will help decide whether or not we want to ask for more mileage, or, you know, 1%, what have you. And I would ask that the manager get those numbers for this pool, if you can, to, so we can take them up to her.
Based on what we did for 2018, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the pool operation runs $54,500 is what we budgeted for 2018. I mean, that's what we budgeted sometimes, you know. We'll get expenses that will go above and beyond depending on what the parks need, but that's, I would round it off about $55,000.
We did have that part that broke in the pool last year, ready to replace, and.
In addition to the mileage, I can say that they do bury in some revenue for concessions and pool passes and so forth. So I'm more than happy to provide council members, put in their box, on the revenue projection that we did then, just for that page if you want that.
Okay. You're looking at $38,000 difference. So, I mean, that's up to the board to decide what they want to do, if they can push that through, if they need to bring that half mill up. But they did show that too, or so.
Anything else? Under council committees and council representatives? If not, manager, it's up to you.
Do all council members want a copy of the revenue budget for the pool? We have scheduled a pre-construction meeting tomorrow at 9:30. This is to kick off the California Avenue paving project. Meeting will be held here at Village Hall, including the contractor representatives, our engineers, and staff. Main goal is to go over the bid specifications with the contractor and make sure they understand. The other end is the engineers set out and ask any questions. Also, traffic control, there is a truck route, so that's something I'll get together with the chief later after we have the meeting. And also discuss asphalt depth options, which recently came up, and I could brief council on the weekly on that. So I'm glad to have that done, and they should be kicking off probably within 30 days, and see them out there. So the anticipated completion date for California, it would be probably mid to late June, and we'll be done. Police Chief Harris recommended Mr. Domenico Marchianda was recently appointed as a part-time patrolman. His effective date will be March 18, 2018, which is seasonally on duty. I would ask the mayor to swear him in at some future date, when it's convenient for the mayor. Also, Elizabeth Huey has accepted the position of reserve officer with the Sebring Police Department. Her start date was March 19. She may be the first of two or three reservists appointed to assist the department. And this is interesting, because this is something that was resurrected that had been done in the past with the police department. Chief Harris indicated that, and I agree, I mean, we talked about it, it's at no cost to the city. It's a volunteer basis. It was sanctioned by council ordinance 323.27, that was back in 2005. Our liability allows up to five reservists. And I think the nice part about it is you have volunteer police officers that do not have any arrest powers or carry weapons, but to do other police work to assist the department. So it's also a great way to break in those officers that came out of the academy, give them a taste of actual police work with the Sebring Police Department, and some future date they might be interested in taking the civil service exam and joining the department if there's a vacancy. So I think it's a good program, and I applaud the chief for bringing that back online. Joining the group, we'll start working on our 2016-2017 audit around late April or May. I've also asked them to submit a proposal to bear and file the 2016-2017 financial statements for the new Hinkle system. I'm not sure if council is familiar with this. State auditor required beginning of 2017, a new program. We have to do Hinkle reports now. Hinkle is just the name of the person who designed the system. Thank you. But it is a requirement, and we have submitted the 2017, and we might need to do some modifications. Apparently, they said our Hinkle report was a little bit lengthy. They only require 15 to 20 pages, and I think we generated 300. So they want a smaller version. So anyway, I want to let you know that that's in progress. Bids will open this week. Liquidation of Village's surplus equipment. We received a total sum of $3,519.31 for the substantial proportion of the obsolete items that we were cycling out that council surplus. Just a few items remain, and Director Sanders is looking for other options to liquidate the balance, so appreciate your efforts on that, Bill. I spoke in length to a Mr. Tony Smith. He's the REO Asset Manager for Shellpoint Mortgage Servicing. This regarding the status and need to demolish the war repair. The fire damaged house at 324 South 15th Street, and I did indicate the times of the essence need to come down ASAP. Mr. Smith emailed the investor requesting a phone call, and he outlined what was required to the investor, so they would be sending a $100 registration fee as well as $10 lower bond. But where the conversation turned to is that the mortgage servicing company recommends strongly to the investor to demolish the property as soon as possible, and the information that I got was within the next 60 days, so that's an offer. Also, we received the first monthly distribution summary from RITA, which is the original income tax authority, on our current tax receipts. There was a typo in the report. I'll get to that in a minute. As of February, our gross tax receipts were $212,663.13. Net receipts were $2,006,284.14. We got a typo on the $30. And the retainer rate for RITA was $6,378.99. So based on the percentage of the deduction, the retainer rate is about 3%, which will be projected, so we're on target. EPA has noticed that there are new modifications for the proposed Lennetta rule that was originally filed back in January 31st of 2018. Modifications were made in response to a March 6th public hearing from the Ohio section of the American Waterworks Association, and there's a listing of modifications that are outlined by EPA for council in the report. This is not specific to Sebring, and these are the new regulations for all public water systems in the state of Ohio. We're currently reviewing those rules to see exactly how, and to make sure we're in full compliance. First quarter financial work continues. I will certainly be ready for the finance meeting. Been a little bit tedious as far as factoring in the 13.5% increase for the health insurance that I had to fold into the personnel line items. There is a couple of capital equipment items that I'd like for council to address, which we consider. This will certainly be brought up at the finance committee meeting. The replacement of the meter reader van, it's pretty old, it's well over 20 years old. And it's actually, it's vital to the work. I mean, it's the only unit we have. Replacement cost to state cooperative purchasing is approximately $22,000. Since it's essentially a van, and we can reuse most of the interior shelving and so forth, I don't anticipate any additional expense. We probably should look at the replacement of the police unit 302, which is the old Crown Big Cruiser. She's about, I don't have the exact date. It's 2011, and it has about 189,000 miles on it. Now, we budgeted, and council approved, a $20,000 in the police capital line item toward another cruiser. We were kind of looking at the used unit, but for an additional $9,000 or $10,000 appropriation from cooperative purchasing, we can get a new one, and that includes turnkey ready for duty. So the chief can probably be there, give you additional details on the fourth, if you like, or I can certainly bring the breakdown. I do want to put it on council's radar, about the replacement for the new BACO. This is the workhorse for the service department. I know we've talked about it before. Approximate price range is about $150,000. I think under, where we have our money already allocated for 2018, I would think would be very difficult to do a single payment. I'm not recommending that. However, we could consider financing it over a period of three years, $50,000 over the year, or over a period of five years, $30,000 a year. So I would recommend the latter with an early payoff, if that's possible, but I would certainly like the finance committee to take a look at that. So as I mentioned too, council and Harp will bring the details in. So, but I did want to put that on your radar. The good part about that is, excuse me, earlier I thought for engineering costs and the additional funding that we needed for the Oregon Waterline project, which is OEPA mandated, I thought we were going to have to appropriate an additional $100,000 out of the general fund. Fortunately, we don't need to do that. After reviewing the OWDA and USDA leftover funding that was not allocated for specific services, but like contingencies and engineering and so forth that we didn't use, I asked them if we could consolidate that into a line item that we could use. So anyway, the short version is, we found $80,500 toward that $100,000 I was looking at. So the impact to us is only going to be about 15. So the moral of the story is, the van and possible additional monies for the cruiser will be well within affordability. So I want to let you know that. We received and deposited the $100,000 bond proceeds from Bond and Newell Company per the arrangement with them. We will pay toward the end, $25,000 toward the principal in the fourth quarter of this fiscal year. That will reduce the principal to 75,000. And since it's a two-year agreement, we will pay an additional $25,000 in 2019, the fourth quarter as well. However, since the bond agreement came post-budget, part of the finance package is I'll have to add $25,000 in appropriation from that in order to pay the principal in the fourth quarter. So I'll add that as well. Also, I recently spoke to Deborah Flora. She's the executive director of Mahoning County Land Bank regarding the status of demolition of properties in Sebring with the program. She indicated that nine properties have been acquired by Mahoning County, which are scheduled for demolition in the next six months. The following property has been tested for asbestos and will be abated in early May. Demolition dates will be scheduled after the abatement is finished. But she was indicating that these neck, the properties I'm going to list here in a second, will probably be taken down in June. And the property, the properties that are scheduled for demo would be 103 West Florida Avenue, 147 South 15th Street, 846 North 15th Street, 346 East Vermont Avenue, 125 East Pennsylvania Avenue. Other properties they have just entered in their inventory list and will be scheduled for asbestos testing soon, but is not scheduled for the abatement process yet until they get the surveys finished. But they are pending demolition, probably by the end of the year. 826 North 17th Street, 305 South 18th Street. There's a house at California Avenue that is not numbered, however the parcel numbers indicated. Also, 516 West New York Avenue. So those, those nine properties are all coming down. So very happy about that. Also, there's something else. I'm certainly loading you up, Mr. Harp. Something else I wanted to mention is that Land Bank made the request to waive the code enforcement liens for the following properties to expedite that demolition process. And that would be for 846 North 15th, 125 East Pennsylvania, and 346 East Vermont Avenue. And the numbers for the waiver indicated. Those are the amount of monies that over a period of years we had tacked on in liens for code enforcement. So I need council approval to waive that in order to expedite the demolition process. So that's it. Mayor, close my report.
Your manager's request to waive these code enforcement amounts?
Yeah, if I may, the actual amounts, just for benefit of the public, is for 846 North 15th, it was $105.76. 125 East Pennsylvania was $162.13. And then for 346 East Vermont, it was $491.14.
What's your feelings on that, council?
You need a motion, or what?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we waive those, so we can get those houses torn down.
Motion by Wright, seconded by Harp to waive the code enforcement liens on those three properties.
You can't waive them. They have to be done by resolution, because they've been put on by resolution. For us to take them off, we have to do a non-collectible resolution and send it over to the county to have it taken off.
There's ample time, because there's still in the abatement process.
Okay.
We can do it. Just do it through finance rate?
Yeah.
I should have known that. Would you prepare a resolution, have a solicitor at the next council meeting?
What's the non-collectibles?
Yes.
Yeah, I definitely don't want to be the holdup.
I got Land Bank meeting tomorrow. I'll tell her that council is...
Unanimously.
Unanimously agreement that they'll do that with a resolution.
Yeah.
And Mr. Wright, if you notice, your West Tennessee Avenue's parcels is not on there. Somebody has paid up some of the taxes, and they will not turn over the deed to the property.
So then we need to take legal action. I am authorizing and directing the solicitor to seek legal action against the property owner to clean that mess up or take that house down immediately.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that is a motion, Mayor.
Where's that at?
That's 616 West Tennessee.
I noticed that wasn't on there. You're saying it's changed hands?
No. Somebody has paid part of the taxes on it, and...
I'm sure it was.
The owner is not cooperating with the Land Bank.
What we could do, just for...
You understand, when the Land Bank tears down a house, the Land Bank has the title to the house in the Land Bank's name.
I thought that was not...
Not that part.
No, it's been dragging on and dragging on, and I don't...
Dragging it on, one of your favorite people.
Yeah. So let's force her hand this time around. Crystal black.
We gotta get this motion down properly. Motion by Wright, seconded by...
Flowers.
Flowers, to request that the solicitor prepare the necessary legislation or suit to get the property at 616 West Tennessee up to code or tore down immediately.
Well, the first step, and the cheapest step, is to have code enforcement go over there and write a bunch of citations.
We've already done that. Health force already been there.
The process at this point would be to get a formal condemnation on the property applicable by the health department. And then once that's done, if Land Bank is not going to do it, we'll have to allocate the funding ourselves to take it down.
I don't think I brought that one with me tonight.
Why do you have the department following through on it? Because of the taxes?
Yeah, they, as Mayor indicated, when they, when they brought it up to speed and they refused to sell the title, then the mayor couldn't proceed because, as Mayor indicated, that's how we do work. They have to have possession of the property in order to proceed.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the title, I mean, the condemnation order. How can they not condemn the house?
Oh, I don't think, I don't think...
I remember correctly, we had the hearings here, and she didn't even respond.
She didn't even respond.
Part of the process was that, from what I remember, the condemnation proceeding was moving forward. Then it was kind of, I think it was tabled in lieu of negotiations between her and Land Bank in order to take over the property. And so they're going to go back to square one on that.
No, we're not going back to square one. Let me know what you need, and I'll make sure that you get it. If I have to go over there with Lionel. I know Lionel has been in that property.
Yeah, oh yeah.
And the chief has flagged that structure as a do not enter, because the floor is virtually gone on the first floor. So...
Shani and I were in there and got out of there.
Yeah.
In a hurry.
And Lionel actually went in there and didn't realize how bad it was. There's a tree that's through the roof. We've boarded it up numerous times. Bill's guys have gone over there and boarded it up numerous times.
And Shani didn't condemn it?
Yes.
He did.
Yes, I'm pretty sure that house is condemned. Yes.
The recommendation is. Why aren't we following through with that?
Well, we can. I mean, what I'll do is, I'll get all of Shani tomorrow and ask him where exactly it stood. If it's been condemned, then we could probably move forward right away.
I think the hearing was held right here.
It was.
Over a year ago.
Somebody said they were going to give her 90 days to clean it up and make it inhabitable, which nothing's been done, correct, David?
Right.
I went and looked at it, too.
No, it's deplorable. It's a disgrace that the neighbors have had to look at that for, this has gone on two years now, at least two years. Long before that, though, but two years since it's been on, or going around the table here.
I think the most recent delay, many months, has been Land Bank option. And that's why, that's why we opted to pursue that, because otherwise we have to be, we have to disperse village funds in order to report the demo.
I think Mr. Shani needs to do his job.
Well, we're not going to, we're not going to, yeah, we're not going to expend the taxpayers' money. We're going to force her into, we're going to force her into submission of what we're going to do.
Definitely, that's outside my scope.
Yeah, that's what...
What that's going to be is a writ.
Yes, and that's what I expected.
It's going to be a writ to instruct Mr. Shani to do his job. To instruct the health department to do their job.
Mr. Shani does his job.
He is not, he is, he's been doing a great job for us, but why isn't he following through on this house?
Well, this one, this one got pushed back because Land Bank was going to make the attempt to get a...
He brings it all back to us, and it goes to the manager, goes nowhere.
It's not, it's not been, it was negotiated that they give her more time. So that needs followed through, because it's going to be a writ to the health department to do their job and follow through on the condemnation order.
Condemnation order has been issued.
They just told me it wasn't. That it was negotiated to give her more time.
90 days.
Yeah, which is since...
She didn't do it.
Since it's passed. I think... Rick, please contact him tomorrow and have him give us the latest update on that particular. And then, after we get that, please forward that on to the solicitor and let her take the ball and run with it from here.
All CC council members on the response.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, I don't want to hear that that house is going to stand for another year.
You say no village funds will be suspended for that?
Well, I don't think any village fund should be suspended, should be spent for that. If we have to expend it, absolutely.
Last meeting I asked about the house on 15th Street and Spuds, and the manager said, "You come up with the money, we'll take care of it." Now, you're sitting over there wanting to tear one down, and all of a sudden we have the money.
No.
I didn't say we had the money.
I know that, I know that.
I didn't, I did not say that. So please don't put those words in my mouth. But I honestly, if it comes to that, I think we should take those homes down. But again...
I agree 100%. I also agree the one on South 15th Street ought to be down.
Supposedly, we got a bond for that now. I mean, we've received the bond for that.
I just went over that in my report in full detail about the arrangements.
How much did we get for it?
They're sending $10,000 bond.
They're sending us $10,000?
However, it may not be necessary, because they're moving forward to solicit demolition companies to start to work on taking it down immediately right away. So I said, you know, part of my conversation with them was, it would be cheaper for you just to demolish the property than send them on. So one or the other is going to happen. But my information from the mortgage servicing company was, they are going to be making every effort to take it down within the next 60 days. They're already, I mean, they've already asked me for recommendations on demolition companies. I can't make a recommendation, but I can give them a list to choose from. And to contact Land Bank if they wanted additional companies that would do the job. So they're moving forward on it.
Shouldn't they have a...
I have, I have a proposal to tear it down. I contacted a company to do it. I have a proposal.
The problem is, though, chief, if we take it down, we have to abate it. If the mortgage company takes it down, they don't have to abate it.
Right, I understand.
And that's why I don't want to really get into expending the taxpayers' money.
I didn't know we had money coming on it.
The bond should be made either way.
Yeah, the bond should be, I mean, it should be made either way. I mean, we should get a hold of that bond.
It should be made a long time ago. The bond is to ensure that they follow through with this in the next 60 days. And then after 60 days, they can have a back if it's down and to council satisfaction.
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, while we're on that subject, has anybody heard anymore about receiving rap on Oregon Avenue, on what the process, progress with that is?
That reminds me, what's the, what's the old carryout by the railroad tracks?
Sub bus station.
Yeah, from what I understood, I thought that was, I think Land Bank is seriously looking and moving on that one.
He's talking about the one on Oregon, that Bill had to go push back out, off the roadway?
Yeah, Shani has been trying to put pressure on the other, the other agencies within Mahoning County to expedite that. So, I mean, I've made numerous requests on that. So I, and I know John's pretty diligent about working on it.
Does he know that they're operating that right now?
Yeah, he's involved. So I, I know it's in his, I mean, I know it's on the front burner.
My opinion, the whole thing should come down. I know she wants to save the front part, but it ain't worth saving, or it isn't. Excuse my language.
The people that I've talked to who've been in there said it's just not fit. It's not safe, it's not fit.
You can tell that from the outside.
Yeah, I can't believe the health department hasn't come and inspected it, because they're serving.
See, they got the building department over there, because of the structural damage.
Yeah, the building department issued this adjudication order on November the 3rd, with compliance by December the 3rd.
It may be laundering around in Mahoning County's evil department.
I'm going to call this guy tomorrow, ask him about this. I'll make, no, I'm not calling him. I'll call the building department.
I think that's where the hole is at, the building department.
I mean, they've issued the adjudication order, but what does that mean? Explain that to me. I have no idea what that means. It clearly states on page two, "No occupancy of structure should be taking place at this time." If people are walking in and out there as we're sitting here today.
They're serving liquor.
Yeah, I know.
Well, that's requiring the county enforcement at this point.
No, it may require ATF enforcement at this point. You need to contact the ATF officer and tell them that the place is condemned in there. That's who I called, would be Joe.
Time certain? Time certain? Tomorrow, you're going to call, or what kind of action are we going to get?
I can call them tonight if you want me to.
I'll call them tomorrow. I'll call them tomorrow. But is there a mortgage on that property that she's collecting on for all that damage in the back?
I have no idea.
Because there would be, they'd have to post that bond, too.
Well, it's been adjudicated, and you're on a clock, right? You would assume they're going to follow through with the process.
Yeah, they're right, they don't, they mean absolutely nothing.
I remember Mahappy owns that building.
Yeah.
She wants to tear it down just the back part. There's a big beam going across, and she has to take that beam out, the whole building's got to come down, truthfully. Okay? She wants $30,000 for it. I do know that. And a company's given her a bid of $30,000 to tear it down and clean it up. I do know that. And it's not worth $30,000 for a person to buy it and clean it, tear it down. But, you know, that, I can tell you that much about it. There'll probably be a bid given back to her, but at this time, that's where it sits.
Do you know her, Jim?
Huh?
Do you know her, by?
Yeah.
Because I can't believe she didn't have the building insured.
Well, I don't know if she does or not.
Well, if she did, then she'd be fine.
It's open every Sunday.
Oh, my God.
It's open every Sunday over there.
Oh, they're open one Sunday.
You know, I do know that. They're not open through the week, but they're open every Sunday. And I told her, you know, I'm going to buy it. She can keep a liquor license, I don't want it. But...
Bottom line is, we need to get it down.
Yep. Bottom line, it's got to come down. Okay. You're going to make some, you're going to contact ATF?
Thanks, chief.
I'll contact John Armini again. He's the one that got it started with the, with the, in the building department, and ask him if he can push. I think this guy must be his boss, this Jim.
We're looking for murder.
I don't, he's the chief building official, Mahoning County.
Well, that's chief's boss, then.
Okay, so I'll contact one of those guys tomorrow. Okay, so I'll, I'll contact one of those guys tomorrow, one way or the other. I'll get some answers on where they're at with some of this stuff.
Will you give Ray and I each a copy of that?
I give you, I got a whole stack of them here, I was going to bring up tonight, so if you don't mind, Mayor, let's just bring them all up.
Okay.
Turner Mae, started January 2017, still standing. Courtney's, January 11th, still junked up. Again, adjudication order, which have no idea what that means. Lionel's written numerous letters. JSI for West Georgia Avenue and 16th Street. Again, nothing's being done.
On the commercial stuff?
It's all commercial buildings. I mean, Health Department, they're, they're issuing letters, but are they, I don't know what they're doing with them after that. I mean, and the bad thing is, these buildings are still being occupied, and it clearly states on the adjudication order, no occup, no occupancy permitted. So I, I don't understand, what, what do we have to do?
I'm not seeing one of these adjudication orders, so if I can get copies of...
Absolutely, you can have everything.
I want to see them.
Get the clerk to, get the clerk. I, I brought them tonight just for that particular reason, because that's another thing I'm getting complaints about, is when are we going to clean up some of this garbage? And I, I don't know really what else to do other than seek legal action. I mean...
That's what we're down to.
I mean, to me, that's, that's where we're at, but I, I don't know what this, if this adjudication order, to me, sounds like a court order, but it, it's not issued by any court, it's issued by the Building Department.
That's, and it's not a court order.
So to me, why even deal, why even deal with the county? We have all the owners' names right here, let's just take them all to court.
I'm going to call over and find out what those are, and what, I'll, I'll ask them...
Well, you want to talk to that Jeff, then, and find out what, what those actually mean, or what do we, I mean, it's just another piece of paper. I mean, Lionel's written numerous letters, and, and we get no response. I mean, my, my thing is, is just like, I mean, I mean, he's just like a cop not carrying a gun. I mean, I mean, what, what good is he really doing? I mean, other than writing a bunch of letters if people aren't going to adhere to him, because he has no authority.
I just, I wasn't aware of any of that going on.
No, I called John Armini at the Building Department and asked him specifically to come to town on Georgia and 16th, the bowling alley, and that was even before it collapsed. When he was here, it hadn't collapsed before he was here, but the roof was caving in. And then also the Turner Mae building. All of them have been issued adjudication orders, but what those mean, your guess is as good as mine.
Mr. Kell, our, our laws in this community, Seabird, have got more teeth in them than the county's laws. All we have to do is enforce them, right here in our town.
That's the question I'm asking, that mean...
Well, I, I've checked into it. All we got to do is go by our, our rules, and we can do it. We used to do it. We never went to the county.
The corrections have not been made. Building inspectors shall make necessary steps to vacate.
We off that subject, counsel, move on?
Yeah, I think we're off that subject.
Okay, before we go to city officials, Madam Court, do you have anything for counsel?
Yes.
Madam Solicitor, do you have anything, counsel?
Yes.
Any department heads have any? Uh, from the mayor's office, I would like a very brief executive session with just counsel.
No action?
No action.
At the end of the meeting, I see?
At the end of the meeting.
Okay.
That's correct. And we would to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employee or official. Citizens' comments, we have no legislation. Mr. Igram?
396 East Wisconsin Avenue.
Thank you.
As a business owner on the corner of 12th and East Georgia Avenue, we see a lot of truck traffic coming off of 12th Street and going down East Georgia Avenue, down to our truck depot that we have in town. I was wondering if counsel would consider, I know probably not this year, because you got California Avenue going, if you were to consider paving East Georgia Avenue from 12th to 15th Street next year.
All right, can you give that to the Capitol Improvements Committee?
Also, Mike, you should, you mentioned Land Bank. Have they ever come forward with doing commercial buildings yet? Not yet?
The, the Land Banks have, but the, the state and the feds haven't released the funds for anything but residential right now.
Okay. There is another property, the old Metis Box on Georgia Avenue, is that on your list? Because that roof has collapsed in there. Across from the ball fields.
Shoney's building, yeah, Shoney, yeah.
That building has collapsed, the roof's down inside.
That's the one, yeah, that's the one on West Georgia and 16th, right there, yes, yes. That one's in this pile, I'm going to give the solicitor.
That, that box was at 12th and 5th.
Wasn't originally... Presswell, I'm, I'm sorry, Presswell, it used to be there. Presswell used to be there.
Jeff, I think that's the old La Mouches china, original.
I, I've been asking for Georgia Avenue for about a year. I can tell you how many taxpayers and how much money people live on that Georgia Avenue pay towards our community. I'm working for you, buddy.
There's only so much money until, I understand that, being on counsel before. So projects go on, and I, I can wait. I mean, put up with it for big years now, and I see what's going up and down that road of the heavy trucks, and it's just tearing that road up, something terrible.
Are they legal?
But I thank counsel for taking that into consideration.
The other thing is, we could...
No through trucks?
No through trucks.
I think that's the only way they got, unless they came in.
Yeah, they have come in off 62.
They can't make the turn of 15th High Avenue, so the guy come that way, come in.
That's a far greater question.
Yep. I don't know how legal it would remedy...
Who's going to get that deal?
I don't know.
I did have one other question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On the demolition. What about the Royal China? The lots there on 15th Street, right next to the tracks? We had the brownfield grant for that, and then the owner, he's under, he's under MIA, we can't, I think you get Bernie Mac or whatever, Freddie Mae or Freddie Mac, whatever the school loans are, they can find you, they can find anybody. I think we turned them loose on him.
The county was involved.
Yeah, well, actually, no, yes, but in 2015, I had been working with the OEP A and the Attorney General's Office, and they did adjudicate him in court for OEP A violations. And from what I remember from the case is that he was getting fines on a daily basis. So I think, I mean, they found him guilty of, of having a brownfield. Unfortunately, as the councilman mentioned, he's MIA, the owner's MIA, and there's nobody to go after. I know that there were two AG agents trying to track him down, but apparently have been unsuccessful.
Could you, could you put another call into them and just see, get us some sort of status if...
I, I think where we're at now is if, it's like any situation, if the liens that the state imposed against the property, if they exceed the fair market value of the property, the state can seize the property. I think the problem's going to be is the state's not going to want to seize a brownfield. So, because they're going to be inheriting a million and a half dollars for the cleanup. So, I mean, I can contact them, I don't know really where to go from here. I think that's something that, I mean, it's a very complicated issue based on the way it is, and it's almost going to require some sort of legal consultant to kind of give us a, a flow chart of how to get through the bureaucratic minefield in order to get some relief on it. I don't know exactly how to do that. I mean, the brownfield grant is still available, there's still money out there, but the problem is, who do you work with in order to take advantage of it? Because the property owner, or whoever the owner of the property is, is going to have to kick in anywhere from 20, 25% of the brownfield grant in order to make it happen. That's the catch 22 we've been, and we've been in for numerous years. If the state would seize it, then we could maybe work a deal with the state to, to re-energize the million and a half dollar brownfield grant. You know, we could use, the, they could, the state might pony up the, the balance, we can get the brownfield grant, clean it up, and then the state could liquidate it to prove their money, but I don't know if a deal like that can be made. I don't know how the state would operate that way.
Could you, maybe you reach out to them just to see where they're at?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's still on their radar, if it's dropped off, or whatever.
I think it's basically, to be, to be honest with you, I think where it is right now is that those fines are still generating, and the state's kind of looking at the direction...
I thought there was movement from the county on those, on the taxes.
I don't think we've ever had movement from the county. I know that we personally...
I thought you had updated us.
But it was supposed to be.
Yeah, that's what I had told the committee business owners that have been asking me, because they're, that's the update I had.
Yep, we had a buyer, too.
But that's kind of the status with the state. They were the last ones that you pushed the button on, and they, I have to give the state credit, I mean, they were pretty rapid, it was like eight months.
So, no, there's no, I mean...
Couldn't get the prosecutor's office to, it's that simple. Only telling the facts of the life. The guy sat right across from me in the Land Bank meeting, and I climbed, climbed his frame over.
I think the only other way to do it is if they seized it, they would put it up at some sort of land auction, somebody might buy it if they, you know, if they would do their own brownfield grant. Or I guess, you know, the village could work with them in order to help expedite that. I mean, it'd be more than willing to do that, but there, there isn't a buyer to, to work with.
What, what's the next step then?
Well, one thing did come out of this, and I hate to state to mention this, thought we might as well make it public now. The former, or the owner of it sold the tract of land in, within the confines.
The whole thing.